All right, we all here? Call this meeting to order at 6:01. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, underground, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome all. Also, I will read our mission statement. In partnership with communities, the mission of the Delaware Glen Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like long-term. All right, uh, cheat, cheat, cheats. All right, roll call. All board members are present, as well as superintendent and listed. And we have Shannon Noah, please speak to you. And then Tracy Talibson and Brittany John are also joining us in our group over there. So, welcome all on this cold chilly Monday in April. So, do we have any changes to the agenda?
The only change is that I just have one more thing in my report regarding the reasons that we got information back today.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So, I would.
Motion by Cole, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments, rebel recognition, I don't know if she each here was.
None.
None, okay. Uh, sorry, public comments, no public comments. Rebel recognition. Who's speaking?
Um, speech, oh shoot.
David, speech.
Speech, oh, I just lost her name in my head. Nora is going, it's on April, what?
And you're on, and I'm.
Oh, there's more, okay, and here the other three, okay. Perfect, awesome. And that is the 27th at Eastview, so they're at the state meet for speech, so kudos to them, congratulations.
I also saw that on April 22nd, Jonah, Kendall, Caitlin, and Hannah represented the DGF Middle School at the Minnesota Band Director's Northwest Regional Beginning Band Second Year Honor Band Festival. That was a mouthful.
Well said.
But out of 150 students from 34 area schools, we had a great representation. I thought that was pretty amazing.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
So, this isn't a recognition yet, other than the thank you to Micah, who was attending, so we talked with the Rebel Fishing Club. It's gonna obviously go on this summer, and I'm gonna give it a shot this year as a captain too. But just when I was there yesterday for the captain's meeting, it was interesting to hear, or it was great to hear, that DGF Fishing Club is probably three times or four times bigger than any other one in the whole area. So, it was nice to hear that, yeah. So, it's just, they'll be kicking it off this summer, and it's just great to have that many kids interested or involved in any activity. So, kudos to Micah for building that with the other guys. I know he's not alone in that, but that would be important to say.
Awesome. Anything else, team? All right, let's move on to reports. 6.1, early childhood report. Looks like we have Tracy here, welcome.
I did put some at your table, um, and just kind of wrapped up some of that stuff for the states of the public. It's probably maybe earlier. Um, one of the, the white page was from Roseanne. Um, she was unable to either tonight, but she wanted to share the numbers of where we are this spring compared to last fall. So, if you have any questions, you can reach out to her as well. Um, the other packet in front of you is, as we all know, we're going through the licensing with Department of Human Services right now to get license for our Rebel Kids Care, to make sure Rebel Kids Care is available to students that are age three, 36 months all the way through age 12. Um, we had to submit seven items to Department of Human Services. I did hear back from them today, and we have everything all done. The only thing that takes a little time is the background checks on everybody. So, they have everything they need from our end. So, um, once we get the background checks done, we would be ready to vote that out this summer rather than later. So, that's a real good thing. Um, the couple of things I wanted to highlight on there is, um, we have met with, Shannon and I have met with early childhood staff a few weeks ago um, to kind of go over um, the vision for the district and where we want to see the growth in three and four-year-olds, five-year-olds through the childcare program, and to kind of share some thoughts. Met individually with Kelly Fox, Maria Rams, and Roseanne, Shannon and I did. And then we followed up with a meeting, Shannon and I, and the paras, to kind of just share some ideas and some thoughts of how can we get more kiddos in the building. Um, that was two weeks ago last week. Um, Wayne was out at conference, and um, so now we'll follow up again and meet with, I mean, with the staff tomorrow and the paras at 11:15. Um, the intent behind it is to kind of, we have met Brittany, Wayne, myself, and Mary Ann just from an early childhood standpoint on, how can we create this program, but also utilize the gym and FYE and the sensory rooms and all of that, so that it fits into the elementary schedule. Um, after a few hours, they were able to come up with a schedule. Sometimes when you have so many around the table, there are maybe 15 different ideas. So, we first had to kind of get the foundation on what would work in the elementary model. Um, the intent and the goal is, for a long time, we've kind of had early child here, elementary here. The goal would be to have this be a three-year-old program all the way up through fourth grade, so that in that building will be the childcare and early childhood we'll all work with. But then, um, we want to incorporate early childhood, the teachers to sit on the site leadership room for that site. Make sure Maria or Kelly or one of them is present on that committee, so that their voice can be heard. Um, so when you have, you look at the elementary, we would run it so that, um, they would be involved with conference, they would be involved with back-to-school night. Um, teachers would work off the teacher's schedule and the teacher contract, all that logistics, the finance aside, we'll defer that to you and Shannon. But the thought would be to put the teachers on the teacher contract, the paras, um, non-certified like they are now, um, and then work with the elementary so that they can feel like they're part of the elementary and almost like another grade level. Um, then just really to kind of get them incorporated in that. Um, also looking at the curriculum for three, for the threes and the fours in the public, make sure they are going through some additional training and workshops and all of that. Um, but that would be also included with the elementary side of things. Um, we've talked about, you know, what do you do about absences? Calling into the elementary office. What do you do when you have a teacher that's sick? Instead of them just working amongst themselves, put it into A-S-O-C. So, it's a, it's really incorporating early childhood into the elementary more, so that a lot of the processes that the district already has, we really just bring them down to the three and four-year-old um, level for early childhood. Um, the, the conversation that I'm gonna have tomorrow with the staff will truly be kind of this, we had to really look at what the elementary had available. And we know that transportation will be another conversation that we're gonna have when we deal with um, different students needing transportation, incorporating this special ed. Um, Mary Ann's been involved in these conversations and looking at running early childhood morning session, eight fifteen to 11:15, 11:15 to noon, they're off having lunch, um, and then running an afternoon session from 12 to 3. But with that, um, if you look at this document here, uh, I want to highlight a few things. I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I think some of it. I want to make sure that you get the answers to your questions. Um, up in the top left-hand corner is truly the Rebel Kids, on the second page, Rebel Kids for Childcare, three and four-year-olds. We'd have a three-year-old room, a four-year-old room. Um, if it gets more, which I truly envision it will, because we have people saying, you know, our goal was, can we have this planned by May 1st? Because with early childhood, the teachers are getting hit up by community members, when do I register for early childhood? Uh, our target is May 1st, 7:00 a.m. We want to roll something out. But tonight, it's just, do you, as a board, support this model? You might, we, we can talk fees. I know Shannon and I have talked fees. The goal is to get more kids in the building. Um, what is that number? I'll share that, a few of those things in that packet with you. But right now, we would love to get it rolled out May 1st, um, but we welcome delays that if you feel that need is there. Um, Rebel Kids Care, three, four, and five-year-olds, that would start September 5th when school starts. Kindergarten through 5th is already open. We would expand our hours, so we're open 6:30 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, before, after school, at non-school days. Expanding our non-school days to be open more next year, uh, so that more of those days, the MEA Summit Christmas, uh, will be open, obviously located at the elementary. With us getting licensed, we can take childcare assistance funds. Uh, so that, um, you know, would be a great benefit. What we do currently with Rebel Kids Care, it's hot, last year, you know, you live, you learn after a year of doing it. Uh, we found that filling our staff positions, we could do it, but we would have to say, okay, we gotta let you go at 4 o'clock because our numbers are down, because we took half-day mornings, half-day afternoons. But what we did this year with the support of our Community Advisory Council is, we gave a priority to families that wanted early childhood and childcare. So that you knew that student would get dropped off in the morning, go to daycare, roll on their early childhood, and with childcare in the afternoon. Um, so that was one of the things that we had noted in here was, um, priority would be given to families that wanted almost like the whole, the whole package. Doesn't say that we won't take morning and afternoon. We're just trying to fill some spots so that we don't have a teacher and a para with seven kids. You know, then, um, we're just, we're trying to make it fit our, fit the budget and the, um, the space is limited right now. Um, we said three, one roll threes, one roll fours, and then the intent would be to roll it out on May 1st. Early childhood, we would have the threes on the right-hand side at the top of the second page. Early childhood would have our threes and our fours. It lists the classes, eight fifteen, 11:15, or 12 to 3. Um, the fee is $75 a week. I'll get into the fees on a couple pages in your packet just a minute. Um, and then we'll continue to have early childhood family education classes at night. The one thing we want to look at is, years ago, uh, we used to have a early childhood family advisory. We haven't had that for a long time. So, we want to bring that back. It might be a piece of advisory council that we have certain people working with early childhood teachers, paras, how can we promote early childhood? How can we get all of our programs out there so people know? Um, and list there a little bit about the evening early childhood classes that we would offer. Down at the bottom on the purple on the left-hand side, we broke it out accordingly. Um, if someone just wanted daycare, um, there would be the hours, five days a week, and with the state DHS, max of 10 hours a day. Um, we need $200 a week, which is equating to $5 an hour. Okay? Um, kindergarten through 5th, we already offer. Um, again, just expanding the hours to be open a half hour later. Um, we currently are 160 um, a week, and you'll look at it and say the difference, there's a difference. The younger they were, it was a little bit, the rates are higher. If you were to look at one of the pages I gave you, obviously, younger kiddos, a little bit more cost there. Um, uh, non-school days, we've listed that. And then it kind of just goes, if you want Rebel Kids Care just in the morning and early childhood in the morning, you go home at noon. Um, and then the next section is, you want Rebel Kids Care in the morning, early childhood during the day and in the morning, and then Rebel Kids Care in the afternoon. So, it's like you drop off at the school in the morning on your way to work, you pick them up when they complement, when you're done at night. Um, if they only want early childhood, if they only want early childhood morning or afternoon session, um, the $75 a week fee. Early childhood morning or Rebel Kids Care in the afternoon um, is down below. I, I won't read through each one, you can look at that, but that kind of breaks out our costs. Our Rebel Kids Care registration fee is $35. It just kind of helps with that sort of supplies and things like that. And it's pretty common that a lot of daycares do have that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So, for, let's just say that Rebel Kids Care, then go to childhood, and then Rebel Kids Care, is that fee for the early childhood and the daycares?
Yes, yes.
Right, that you built in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We just thought, you know, some families might just want to know, I want just this, how much is my fee? So, we just broke them up in those different areas. The right-hand side just kind of highlights a few descriptors for each one of the programs, okay? I know you'll probably have questions, but maybe I'll just continue on if you don't mind. On the next page, it should be in purple. It says daycare comparisons. Is that the next one you have in your packet? Or what do you have, I can go over.
The schools. Do you have school tours, Detroit, this first bill?
Okay. So, overall, um, what we did, and it starts out morehead threes.
Yep.
So, what I did, and I was, I shared this with Shannon a little bit last week, is overall, we want to see what other school districts are charging. Um, so if you were to look at this, and I won't go line by line, but overall, the intent behind this is, for example, Morehead, they're offering their threes program, two and a half hour sessions, two days a week, and the number of weeks a month, okay? Four weeks a month. Um, so that, like Morehead, they're doing five hours a week, 20 hours a month, okay? Their rate is $93 a month. So, that breaks down to $4.65 an hour, okay? And you can just kind of go down, and I just wanted you to see what the hourly rate was, um, when you're looking at this, and then any notes that, you know, like, Paul, you know, transportation. Um, and our proposal was $5 an hour. Could that go down? Shannon and I talked about that last week. Intent, if the kids here, we're open to that. I mean, if that's what the board supports, you know, the goal is to roll the program. The one thing I added at the bottom of the page is I just wanted you to see that was, those are our current rates. Those rates have never really been adjusted for probably over 15 years. Um, I was talking to Roseanne last week, and she said, the last record I have is of 2009, and that was still those hourly rates. So, we have never updated those rates or increased those rates at the earliest since 2009. So, I just want to make sure you know that the intent isn't to say, let's just bring them all the way up there. If you feel it's $4.50, um, we, all we need to do is plug in that formula, and we can easily change the yellow handle, so that we have that. Um, does that help, this, this document here, to kind of give you a little breakdown to?
Sure. I, I was really surprised to see the, the rates on tots in school readiness. I have a 20-year-old, and I'm like, that's what I paid when he went. It has not changed. So, I mean, I think that's pretty good for them to have that rate for that long, so.
Crazy, how many kids, it's like, what's the cap?
Which one?
First group.
Uh, early childhood, we've said we've had 20 kids in class. Will we have 20 in class? Maybe not. But that's, that's what we said, probably be our max. Um, or daycare, same thing, one, one to 10. So, we would have a teacher and one para in the daycare room, based on DHS's guidelines.
Does it say in here? I'm sorry, we've already mentioned.
No.
What, what do we have right now? Possibly, those school readiness.
That is on, on Roseanne's report. What she noted is, um, say, for example, like, the three half-dates for school readiness. Right now, there's 22 students in there.
Sorry, I see, I got a, I'm sorry, I can read it.
Nope, no, that's okay. Um, any other questions on that piece?
So, just so everybody knows too, um, today after this meeting, we had our, we have our facilities and transportation committee meeting. And I have this a part of it too, so we can have more discussion there um, at the board level about the fees, about anything that Tracy brought up tonight. We can talk about that because it is a facility thing. I have a map that Tracy, Brittany, Wayne, and Mary Ann went through, so you can see where we're going with these rooms to build. So, I will show you that during that facilities committee meeting afterwards, and then we can let the rest of the board know. If they have questions for Tracy, we can do that then.
Yeah. Um, the next one I have was just a date. It's orange, the daycare comparisons. Just so that you can kind of see overall the numbers for DGF under Rebel Kids Care. That's our proposal. That's our proposal. So, um, you know, if you look at little discoveries across the top, um, I think this was a lower number. I know the rates are going up on May 1st. Um, but several of these don't allow vacation. So, they, families are paying 52 weeks a year. Um, and the, the need is there. Um, but I'll let you look at this when you have, uh, the whole. Uh, the next one was, um, this one here. This is just breaking down, in the, in that little handbook, in this little flyer here, all of this information is this document, so that you can just readily look at this and see how much, um, how much it is if you were to change, say, early childhood down to four and a half um, per hour. Then you can kind of just get an idea. Um, and the one thing that probably emphasizes, we're going from, um, a, a reduced hours to a lot more hours. So, we're going to 15 hours of student contact time with the teacher versus summer, seven and a half, some might be 10 a week. So, we're doubling, if not tripling, the amount of contact time. But at the end of the day, we just want more kids in the building. So.
Is there any conversation, like, if families have multiple children who are going to be attending the daycare, discounted rates of the second child or?
You know, we've had that, we've had that question, and we've had employees get a little perk of being here. Um, I'll be honest, in 20 spots, you will fill them up. There is no doubt about it. Um, our goal with Rebel Kids Care was, I think, 40 kids to start, and, you know, just now we have 93. Um, the goal this summer was 60, we're pushing 100. Um, so, the spots are there to fill. I think the next spot is, the next question's gonna be to Wayne and Brittany, okay, what other room are we gonna get? You know, but I, I've already shared with Carolyn, who works with Rebel Kids Care right now, and just that we just have to be mindful that Rebel Kids Care might be floating from room to room. It's like plastic on a cart, that might be us in the fall. You know, we'll take what we can. But now with this program, these little kiddos are gonna get gym time, and, um, it's, it's a win-win, you know? Um, the last thing is, um, at the end of the day, probably, this is just a template per cost. Um, I've updated it since Shannon and I talked last week, and it might have went up a little. Uh, and the intent behind that was, um, overall, we plug in the number of hours we need each staff member, an average cost for benefits. Um, the ones that, if this grows, early childhood continues to grow, uh, or Rebel Kids Care in the next section down below on our employees, we have to keep in mind that the, the teacher in her daycare will only be there eight hours a day. So, we need to build in someone else to cover for her or him at the end of the day. So, that's what those little para flows are, is just knowing that we'll probably need three hours a day for two people in each room to cover and close at the end of the day. Um, so, overall, at the end, at the bottom, um, this is the proposed, if we had 20, 40 kids, 20 and three-year-old daycare, 20 and four-year-old daycare, 52 weeks a year, that's approximately how much we're gonna bring in, and eight, 11 we currently get now, and the projection of just tuition, um, will that go up if, you know, we get more kids? Yes, but you'll see just the difference, um, there. Um, and the other benefit is, we'll be able to take childcare, daycare assistance, so. But tomorrow will be more of a conversation with early childhood staff, just to, um, they know the vision, but just, you know, we know there'll be questions, but I think before we take this any further, we just, um, need to know if there's support from the board on it um, before we, May 1st will be here for me, so. I'll wait for Shannon tomorrow. Hopefully, I sold it while I'm here.
Thank you for all the work that you put into this. Just remember, it was stressful, although it was trying to find daycare, and it's wonderful that there's other options out there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good work, I think, for this together.
Have questions, let me know.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, food service report. Shannon, you're up.
I'm here.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Shannon Noah, I probably haven't met you yet. Um, I am the food service director for DGF. I, this is my 17th year in K-12 Nutrition Service. I was with Harvard Public Schools for the majority of my career, went over to Lockwood Public Schools as the director, and now I'm here. So, I have a huge passion for school lunch, not only in the kitchen but outside. I've spent eight years with the North Dakota School of Nutrition Board of Directors, and then on to the National also. So, I, I want school lunch, so here we are. Uh, I had a chance to look at Mr. Olson's, Eric Olson's minutes from last year, and I figured what I'd do is kind of wrap into that to bring you up to speed on what was going on there. Supply chain issues, it's still ongoing, it's gonna continue, this is probably never gonna go away. Um, but the way being proactive is when we go to scratch cooking and utilize our local farmers. That's how we really get away from having to rely so much on our supply chain issues. So, um, I anticipate that it is going to be less of an effect for us overall. Vendors, uh, Mr. Olson had Cashew, Reinhardt, Cisco, and US Foods. Currently, we're using Cashew and Reinhardt. Eric signed us two years with Lakes Country, and they do our grocery bid. So, we will roll into them into the next year, but after that, I'm going to reevaluate if maybe we should go out to that. Currently, what the bids are set up is a lot for industry. Um, when we're shifting away from that, we need to utilize more things like buttermilk and spices and, and along that line. And they don't necessarily bid them items, so that I think next year, when looking at it, I will look to see if it would be more cost-effective for us to go that way. Uh, milk bid, I have solicited four vendors, but I'm hoping to afford that at the end of this week, along with the bread bid also. Um, currently, we're a cash play on milk and pan of gold with the bread. So, uh, I'm just waiting on a couple more to come in, and then I will review it, and hopefully, in a week. Um, coal paper currently is doing our chemical and our paper. From what I find, DGF has not done a bid for chemical or paper in the past in the Nutrition Service Act. So, what I did is I contacted a couple of the vendors, and I said, you know, let's, let's talk about some pricing and see where this is at, so we can do a comparison to make sure that we're, we're where we need to be. So, Bix does our fresh fruits and veggies, and I still plan to utilize them in, you know, 23 and 24. Uh, Chelsea Newton did a farm-to-school grant. I did complete that and close it out, so we are done with that one. Uh, Mr. Olson applied for an equipment grant for an oven, which was ordered through Collinex. I did discover that the grant wasn't awarded, so we were able to cancel that before it came in. So, that's, that's all of them. Uh, he updated on the remodel. We have a few small things left to complete here or there, but I think I seen his chopper, is that the? Okay, so I reviewed that when he was out a couple weeks ago, so he is aware.[1732.86] he was out a couple weeks ago, so he is aware. Meal pricing, well, Minnesota's going to reverse all. So May 16th, we have a webinar with MBE to see what that looks like for next year. But FYI, since Minnesota did make the announcement, our menu of lunch values has doubled this year. So I think a lot of our families think that this is the limiting power. So I'm getting ready to send a letter out and just some update that doesn't start until next year. So let's just kind of roll into this. So that was his old business that he had. So moving to my new business. Exciting, farm-to-school trade grant. We were awarded $71,000 to pilot, to really utilize our local farmers. Minnesota considers local the whole state. When I looked at it, I thought, well, downsides that even more. Local to me is, how can we utilize what is in our community? You know, community supports us, let's give back and support the community. So we have partnered with Rickford Ranch. They are doing our beef. They are in Downer, Minnesota. Lori Pender with Hodge Hodge Honey is doing our honey, and she's here from Glendon. Ten Four Farms is doing pork, so we have brought pork sausage and pork links coming from them, and they're out of Henning. We got Hughes Garden out of Holstead. Asgard Farms out of Orhand is doing our wheat flour. Lake Bloomers is doing our micro grains out of Yewland. And then last week, I met with Dougie Thomas Farms and Farm in the Dell, and they both actually farm in our communities here. So we are going to be working with them. And then Fairy Rose Farms also to utilize some produce and veggies through their farms. I did talk to Lori Pender again. If Mother Nature is very kind this year, we are going to put sweet corn on the menu next fall to kind of showcase it. But that's up to Mother Nature on what she wants to do. So we are still working through our committed food purchases and inventory. So you might hear, you know, one time we might have a made muffin, and the next time we have a package. We have to commit to things a year out, you know. So we're still trying to use that inventory up and get that rolled out. So my hope is to soon enough keep working on that. But yeah, we're, right now, we're working back and forth. May 9th Farmer Showcase, this is kind of exciting. It started out as part of the grant. We have to have MBE come in and do a review of how we're using our funds and all that. So I thought, you know, this would be a great opportunity to bring our farmers in and let them see, you know, what their food looks like on our lines. So I contacted MBE, talked to them, I talked to Mr. Hudson. Now the state is sending all four of their reviewers in. So I said, oh, now we have to behave when they're around here. But they promised they will behave too. So they're coming. They have invited the Department of Agriculture Commissioners. We've invited the media, we've invited the school board, the district office. Everybody is really excited to come out and see, you know, what we're, what we're utilizing. We also, we have some students that do like a YouTube deal, and they came out and did an interview, and I invited them, and I said, you know what, you should come out and talk with farmers, talk with the media, and do that. So hopefully, they will follow up too. So that is, is in the works, and we're planning maybe the 12:30 on May 9th. Summer Feeding, the Dilworth Site, I submitted an application into MBE, and Dilworth Site has been approved. We're just waiting for the approval on the dates and the times for that. I've been working through the Glendon site, trying to see if I can't get it approved, and I'm going to run some final numbers and just talk with the state and see. So hopefully, by the end of the week, I'll know for sure if we can get them approved or not. Fresh fruit and veggie program. In the past years, we've had to have 50% fewer reduced in order to qualify. This year, they went down to 40%. And Dilworth Site is at 36%. So we're not quite there. But on the North Dakota side, what they've done is they have a pot of money, and once they disperse that out, they'll reduce down a little more if they still have some funds. So I did fill out the application and plugged it out there, just hoping that maybe the state of Minnesota might have some funds, and we might tap into that. I don't know. We'll, we'll see. We won't know until probably the end of May. But my hope is to offset the snack program that we're currently doing. So now the next part is the snack program. When I came in, I kind of wanted to evaluate, you know, what programs are we doing, where's our funding going, staffing, just the whole nutrition as a, as a whole. And there was some questions that I had in regards to the snack program, that I went in, I figured out food cost metabolism. I mean, this is, and they're still going to continue to rise. That's, we're not going to get away from, from that so much. So I broke it down to what it's costing, and on a yearly basis, added in our budget, we do the labor and the benefit part. So I broke it down there again. With everything, right now, it's costing us 52 cents per student per day to provide snack. So, and then with the parents' contribution, with what we took in, the funding, there's nine cents covered. So, yeah, things to think about there, on where we want to go and what all entails there. New hires, I conducted 11 interviews. May 2nd, we will be fully staffed. Everybody will be started. Thank you to everybody that has helped. We had a couple wonderful world's best dishwashers, Mr. Hendrickson, Mr. O'Keefe, that came in and helped for a couple days. So I think they're a little famous on Facebook. All the students were so excited to see them, and I think they had a million pictures taken, but it was a great deal. USDA proposed changes. I included in the back of the packet. There is a lot of changes right now going on with the USDA. I like to be proactive versus reactive. So it's coming. What is that going to mean? By shifting over to more scratch-based and more local foods, we're, we're going to dodge a lot of these. They're going to be sodium, there's sugar, there's a lot of that here. The one thing that, just in the initial looking, is chocolate milk is really on the forefront of this conversation. So there's a chance that chocolate milk might have to go away. So we'll, we'll see. Currently, the elementary doesn't do chocolate at breakfast, so that we're adding. There in, in Glendon, we do, but yeah, we'll have to see what they, the USDA decides. Universal meals, the participation data enclosed, I did that on page five and six. I looked back in age the last five years on what our participation was. One thing that I, I want to emphasize with our families is the importance of communicating with the free reduced application, even though we're universal, but still fill these out. Those are probably given to summer feeding, fresh fruit, veggie program. So that's one thing that I will be working on to really keep plugging out there with them. So when I came on, on Halloween was my first day, and I started looking at the whole program. I like to come up with a plan, a plan, like a fashion plan, a strategic plan. Where are you going? Where are we going to go? How are we going to get there? Why are we going to do this? So what I did is I visited with my staff, and I did an internal survey with them, and I, you know, what do we need work on? What great things are we already doing? What do you envision? So the next page on, I won't go through it all. I just, I just evaluated the program as a, as a whole of where we're at, where I think we need to go, what the expectation of that is. And I want to have three main focus areas, participation, communication, and accountability. You know, we want our students to participate. We want them to come in and really enjoy our program. You know, we want to have accountability with our program, and we want to communicate to our stakeholders in our community on what we're doing, where we're going, why we're doing it. We can do all these great things, but if we don't tell the community how great they are, nobody's ever going to, going to know. So, yeah, do you guys have any questions for me?
I've heard great feedback from your state. I have four kids in all three areas of the schools, and my new schoolers have rave reviews.
Thank you. So I'm glad to hear that, because it really is about them. And looking at our data, it's actually our high school where we have our lowest participation at. So hopefully, over the next year, you know, we'll, we'll kind of increase that. And what, one thing that I even found at Wapperton is if you look at our daily participation on page five, you think universal meals is, all of a sudden, is going to increase if it doesn't. And I think a huge reason for that is because everybody shifted to everything was prepackaged. And even though that, that's easier, the kids, I, we, if we take a pizza out of a package and put it on a tray, we will sell more than if we had it in that package, serving it that way. So one thing that, you know, I've had the conversation with my staff about is that it's always been free to the kids personally, because they don't pay their lunch bills, mom and dad. So we really have to reel them in, you know, we, we got Pedro, we got Tasty Freeze, you know. We got to look at what's around us. So, yeah. Well, my goal, um, well, our own nutrition, I would like to see higher than around like 80, 80%. But even at the high school rate, I'd like to see, well, that's 70, 75% is where I'd like to see it. And when we're looking at it now, we're, last time I looked at the high school, it was about 32%. So, yeah.
I have a senior this year, so he comes home every day for lunch. And, you know, I'm like, we tried out the new, you know, there's new food and new cocaine, and he's like, I have the next hour free. So, so I, you know, I think that, yeah, we can reel those older kids in and.
And then, and our choices, choices.
Choices. I think, you know, when a la carte was available, they probably were more apt to stay in the building and try that, so.
Yeah, and with a la carte, you know, so when I started at Farnham, a la carte was where you'd get the soups or the other special kind of things. And I shifted away from that because I think everybody should have the opportunity, maybe free, reduced pay, to have that entree choice. So I shifted that all to an entree, and our a la carte was baked cookies or smart snacks or drinks. So we kind of shifted it that way, which our intention is to bring that back. It's just, I think that we're probably more, more of a next year, once the staff is all in place and for sure. But it is fun to come back.
Any other questions? The universal meal, is that something that all of the schedule is going to be for a year, the future?
So we have the, the MBE webinar on the 16th, on May 16th, but right now, they wrote it. I, I would say two years publicly, and then, you know, politically, things change, and then we have to see where it goes, goes from there. So, yeah.
I think what's going to happen is they're going to learn a lot in these first two years, this biennial, when they're going to, legislators are going to make that two-year decision, and then, like Shannon said, are they going to be, be about? I think I'd like it to be ongoing. It's just going to be whether or not we can.
Well, when you look at the national, the national of it, a lot of states are shifting that. So, yeah, so if anything, if it's anybody's guess, but.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you. All right, board committee reports. Personnel committee. We met, we met, we talked about it last time, because we met before the board meeting. So I don't think we have anything new to add to that besides, oh, we did find out today our agreements. Personnel committee, it's done when we worked with the teachers' union over payroll issues. So that's our personnel committee report tonight.
We're looking at confidence.
Yep.
More to come.
Yep, more to come on those. Perfect. DLT, Laura and Brittany, thank you for the email.
We just went over the survey results again. The survey was resubmitted, and I think we got almost 200 replies.
202, I think.
So double. And we're coming again, meeting again next month to talk about prioritizing our goals for the strategic plan. Anything else? Top five priorities.
All right, superintendent report, 6.4.
All right, well, the first one is, and Mike has shared some information with you, Lindsay, and you shared it out today too, about our summer board meetings. And we have to kind of discuss that. We can talk about it now or later, or the next board meeting or whatever, what that's going to look like. Mike and I are, both can be board captains for the summer on Monday nights, but we could go the other Monday nights, hopefully with the board meetings. I know there's some conflict, and so we just want to make sure that, or I wanted to make sure we brought it up now, have some time to talk about it. It wouldn't have to be settled today. It would be nice to do it soon, though, the next one for sure, so people know. And so anyway, I just wanted to touch base on that. And Lindsay, I know you sent that out, so thank you for that. Building grounds update, you guys approved Building and Grounds Director. That position was posted. We do have one applicant right now. I contacted the applicant, told them we're going to go through this Friday. Hopefully, we can get a couple more. I'd like to have more to interview. But we'll find out by this Friday if there's more. And if there is, great, we'll set up interviews for the following week and move forward with that position. Remember, buildings and grounds, we talked about it, they'll be overseeing the custodians and the maintenance department. And it's a position that we, when I came on, we had a couple people that are no longer with us, and so now we can fill that position a year and a half or whatever later. That's the plan. Survey results, did you guys get my email today, so we can look at some of that? So I wanted to share that with you, because just like Brittany and Laura were saying, we're doing it with the district leadership team. You can see my next thing on the agenda is a June work session for the board, because that's, I want to have you guys look at this data. I want you guys to come up with priorities. So when we do a work session, we're going to have input for the district leadership team, which has parents and students and some staff. And then our work session as a board, putting kind of all that together and having our inputs and whatnot. So, yeah, I mean, the ball is rolling. We just, one of the things we talked about also at the district leadership team meeting was, I want to get three to five goals for the district. And then I want each department, how does that, how does that elementary fulfill that goal or priority? What's the impact of the middle school on that goal or priority? What's the nutrition? What's the community ed? What's the, you know? And, and some of those priorities might not affect all those areas. They might affect six of them, it might affect three of them. But that's kind of where job then too, as a board, is to kind of set that map up. And then, so it's my job then to make sure those things start happening and start showing evidence of priorities being met, or at least partially met, and where we're at with that. So, yeah, it's an important document as we get into next year, hopefully, is the plan. Work session in June, just, yeah, I want to set something up. Brooke and I talked about it today. I just want to figure out when is that with you guys, some things we need to talk about here in the near future. Set some dates and times to meet with the admin. Last year, we spent a half a day here, and then we spent an afternoon. I think it's going to need to be more than one morning. It's going to have to be an all-day affair. So we'll talk more about that. It's going to get closer, especially due to the strategic plan planning, right? We need to get that figured out and set a course.
Before, just to clarify, so we're thinking all day board members and administration?
Yep, that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. So, and we can discuss that if you guys have other input. But yeah, it's going to need to be an all-day affair. Construction update, just going to say we're getting really close. They're cleaning the media center in Dilworth this week. They're cleaning the two music rooms this week, and we should start getting occupancy on them after that. Am I forgetting anything? Anyway, yeah, so we're working through that. I did talk to the insurance company today about the little water thing we had. So, anyway, we will work through that. I believe it'll be on construction insurance. It'll be on the construction company's insurance. We don't know which one yet, so we're working through that. But our insurance company knows about it, so they're involved if they need to be, and that's very important. We are meeting tomorrow. Trevor, who's president of MECO, and Mission Mechanical, have had some of these latest issues and fixing things. We meet with them tomorrow in my office to work through some of the bills and things that we've had to deal with lately. So we're going to work on that. The shop, the kids are moved in. They've been using it. It's not totally outfitted yet, but the welders are there, the woodworking, and a lot of the machines are getting moved in. They're starting to use it. Long way to go yet is dialing that in, but we're getting closer. Yeah, excited about that. You guys could see the budget, and we're, we're doing okay too. And I can talk about that more tonight in the committee meeting to give you more specifics. Lindsay, we talked about the agreements. We got the official letter today from our teachers' union, saying that they believe that it's been resolved. We may have some issues here and there for individuals, but otherwise, it is good. And it was nice to hear. And then one last thing, I visited today with the mayor of Glendon, AKA Tracy, about doing a community event where I'm going to be there, so the community can come and meet and talk to me, yell at me, throw at me, say nice things about somebody, whatever. Also, I'd like to invite the board to that too. That'll be June 28th in Glendon at the community center. It'll be, it's from 7 to 8, or we'll be following their council meeting. It'll be, it's from seven to eight or we'll be following their council meeting. So and this information, we just decided this today, so bear with it, it'll be getting out shortly. Visited with Dilworth Community Center, we're going to be there on June 21st, that is a Wednesday, from seven to eight. Again, if you, I'd like you guys to be there, whoever can come, great. It'll be just for me to kind of give an update on the district and then let community members say whatever they need to say. Felton, we are working, don't have a date finalized yet, but it'll be in June or did we get it finalized? Oh, sorry.
June 6th.
Perfect. There's a new agenda that I didn't. So June 6th, perfect. I know we were working on that today and I didn't know if it, perfect, awesome. So that'll be June 6th. And so again, you guys are all invited. We'll get that information out, we'll put it in our newsletter, we'll put it on the website, et cetera. And so again, that's just that opportunity for the, for me to communicate with the communities better, so obviously you don't need to live in Glendon or Doro. It's for anybody in the communities and if you can't make one, so you're a Dilworth resident, you go, I can't make that night, come to the Glendon one or come to the Felton one or vice versa. So it's just another, I guess, a way for the superintendent or the board to communicate with the community. So you're not required, it's something I threw together, so you go, oh, thanks a lot. But it's something, if you can be, I really appreciate if you can be there. So I think that's good for a community. Five people, 50 people, I don't know, we'll see. Questions for me?
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to 7.1, this is the approval of the random meeting minutes of April 10th. Do we have motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Amy, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, things in accounts, Laura?
$746, $742, $11.77.
All right, also included in your packet is your treasurer's monthly budget report, donations, proof of donation from Amy Johnson, one wheelchair, used in the health office. I know that your host is happy about that, never having a wheelchair again. Donation from the DGF Touchdown Club in the amount of $1,561.40, we use for tackle rings for the football team. From the donation from Christie Brown and Michael Brown in the amount of a 10 or K1,000 Pentax SE with zoom lenses light in case used by the high school experimental photography class. We're with the resignations of Brianna Olson, paraprofessional effective April 10th. We have the resignation of Paul Markort, high school teacher, effective the end of the 2022, 23 school year. We have the resignation of Rachel Colzer, paraprofessional at the end of the 2022, 23 school year. We have the resignation of Brianna Ladue, paraprofessional effective May 4th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion? Are you no questions? There's.
I think you do. When you're in service and a great teacher.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I feel bad for the kids, the juniors, because they really wanted him as a, you know, a government teacher, my son, and he just, like, this is the best class I've ever taken. He's going to be missed very much, so. Anybody can go visit him down at the state Capitol, he likes to give tours and he's very happy to do so. I didn't say that out loud, do I?
He would love it, yeah. Him and I walked around the Capitol together and I guess, yeah, it's great. I know our basketball team, got to spend some time with them, so. He loves to see us, so.
All right, we have a motion by Nicole and a second by Micah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.1, this is continuing contract status. We have, it should be in the back of your packet here. Way in the back, way, way in the back. All right. Do we, we have a list here, continuing contract status. Do we have a motion? Motion by, is that Brittany or Nicole? Do we have a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion on this list?
Check, yep, I checked, I think principals, they said it was all good.
All good?
Yep.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 9.2, we have a certified contract for William Iwok, elementary teacher, MA step 30, or plus 30, step 18, started to start of the 23, 24 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? I got Brittany over here. Any questions or discussion? Where's he going to be at? I mean, obviously the elementary, but do we know what?
I want to say fourth grade.
Is this her baseball?
It is.
Oh, okay, he's a baseball coach.
He's retired from Fargo.
Oh, good.
He's younger than me. G R A problem in the state of Minnesota, but I was getting a little legislative issue, so have a nice day. Sorry, so it is, it's Bill or me.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is a one-year, one-year certified contract for Riesa Jura, elementary teacher, BA step one, effective for only the 23, 24 school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion?
This is to cover a one-year leave.
Okay.
Yep.
This is covering Lisa's position, right?
Yep.
All right, do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.4, non-certified contract for Midia Longoria, food service starting in May 1st, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.5, certified contract for Sam Poleseth, high school social studies teacher, BA step one, effective the start of the 23, 24 school years. All those in favor? I'm not a motion, sorry. Sorry, it's Monday. Second by David, any questions or discussion?
So this is to fill.
Nicole, yeah, Nicole and David. Sorry, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Yes.
All right, next board meeting is Monday, May 8th. Note the time, it's 5:30 in the high school conference room. We have, what do we have here? Choir or band? What, I think there's some minors.
I think it's band, I don't think I have that.
At the conclusion of the next board meeting, we will have policy committee meeting and again, we will make a decision on those, I mean, we can have a discussion on the Monday meetings. I personally, I don't have a problem with moving up to the first and third. My family's known since I got on the board, any Monday night, there could be a board meeting. And I prefer to have meetings on Monday nights, so we're not doing Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, which I've done in the past too. So if we can keep to a consistent day, I think that'd be helpful. I understand we all have commitments. Like right now, I'm missing my daughter's softball game, but I'm here because I made a commitment, so you know, I get it with childcare, maybe, you know, you could bring them.
Well, I just want to say, I emailed Shannon and Lindsay, it just said, my husband's on the fire department, they meet the first and third Mondays. So knowing we met the second and fourth, it worked out great. But not saying I can't get anyone to watch my kids, I'm just saying I can't guarantee his commitment before mine, so we just have to try and work it out. Or they can sit out here and fend for themselves for an hour too, so.
Just for the summer.
It'll just be for the summer. I think it's June, June 5th and then it'll be done even August, maybe it can move back. So I know, I got you, no, it's fine. Appreciate you letting us know.
We'll make that change and then bring the, we'll have to probably put it on the agenda for next time, right, Brooke? I want to be kosher. All right, any other things? So look at your calendars for June and if there's some dates that absolutely you cannot miss work or, I know I have to look at my schedule and see if I can even be gone. So if anybody can pull out some, I'm thinking probably towards the end of June.
Yeah, I think.
Would that be, like, if we want to say, can you hone in the last two weeks? Because I know my first two weeks and I'm traveling for work in June.
A weekday.
Maybe all day.
Yeah, it'd be all day, so that's the other thing. Is it, yeah, is it a Friday is the best for everybody? Is a Monday better for everybody? Is a Wednesday? I mean, I don't, I mean, that's, everybody's schedule's different, so I just want to.
Yeah, so just start looking about, thinking about some dates and why don't I throw in an email? Or maybe Brooke, could you set up like, everybody could email you like a couple of dates and you could make a spreadsheet like the last two weeks? Could you do that? Do you have a spreadsheet through?
Oh, spreadsheet.
I am not. So why don't you make up a spreadsheet, send it out to the board with availability on like the last two weeks of June? And then we can go over there.
The first act, we can do that.
Yeah, the 20th, 21st will not work, yeah.
Okay, does that sound reasonable and everybody can put their?
Yep.
Whatever in?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with that. So this meeting is adjourned, 7:02.
One thing I forgot to announce is the lights are in the theater and they've been training on a little bit. You can set them to music and the colors will start crazy if you want.